Steve is, I guess, one sick.
He loves math.
United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move the motions, second by Rob, approve agenda.
I'll second.
Move by Francis, second by Rob, approve agenda. All favor sign by same eye.
Aye.
All the same time, motion carries. Next we have a bill.
Let me see one type way now in the second page. Third paragraph, Bob need from me and US banner be agency of Nebraska. Moving approved the amendments.
Here's a couple of things that Steve wanted in there was that cemetery's sexton should be where it's written yet with Darryl Pataoff and Don Morrow is actually on the cemetery. But where it is still sexton. And park elevation board with Don Pataoff, it's also actually during COVID too. So this kind of additions and corrections should be made.
Okay, then I may have my right to have those corrections too.
Second of the motions. Move by Rob, second by Darryl, approve the amendments with corrections stated made. All favor sign by same eye.
Aye.
All the same time, motion carries. Next we have a bill. We have to add one, four pages ahead of our going, because we're going to get means until that noon. So if you're ready. Means is twenty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. Twenty-one thousand, yeah, twenty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. That changes our total in the back, it's one, two, three, six, three, three. What was the like the dump service call?
Oh, actually it wasn't a service call, it was actually parts. Because that's personnel that they took, I know they charge for a service call and it's not landage. But it was just, it was for the impeller, the impeller and a...
That wire ring?
Yeah, that wire ring, that was for, like to fix that one, so we have a spare for WIE.
I wonder where he came from.
And the other one I have a question on is, we had Roderick come up. Kenny was up to Steve Maxx and he could only throw out a hundred and twenty foot with his system. So we didn't call Roderick in to go about another ten foot and open it up. Because he wanted to just flip over, flip through the street and stop, which ended up not having to happen. But I think that bill should come up with Kenny's bill there because I don't think he should be able to handle everything.
That was a big one, I have a question. You said Roderick wanted that done.
Yeah, believe me, I put a big question mark on that. I says he doesn't have enough tape and glue at heart, so we must...
Sometimes it's good, Roderick.
No, we'll have to pay the words to conduct office.
Yeah. The one that speeds why it's so high is there's a tier toolbox around there for that new floor. That's where I want the floor correct.
Well, two actually, there's more than one floor. There's other floor.
That's what happens.
Any other questions on the bills? I have an intent motion to approve paying the bills with additions and means.
I saw that. I'll second.
Motion by Darryl, second by Francis, favor. All favor, sign by same eye.
Aye.
All the same time, motion carries. Under old business, we have the segment property. And I think Lauren just stated that.
All done, huh?
All done.
Anything else, you've got some outstanding ones that he's still needs to pay yet. Obviously that was hopefully to do with it. It was about fourteen thousand, four or fourteen thousand is unpaid yet. Thirty-four thousand, almost fifty-five thousand is paid.
So we're going to follow behind so that looks...
Yeah. I think he's got ownership of that again.
A little bit of insurance for itself, don't you?
Yeah, most definitely.
I'm just simply nothing I'd be able to do on that, on that thing anymore.
No.
Security, I think Bob has got that option.
It is completed.
You have anything else to do?
How the cameras work for a lot.
On the system, we'll be able to pull up to the system.
I think there's something we should talk about in the show around here.
You got enough range to put that off, see if that...
Yeah.
Okay, nothing else in spirit, then mark everyone on electric.
Okay, all I got is really waiting to get that Tony Witt and Mark by Central Line Services. And he got it in there. And I got a thing put together about what that project cost for them off my, that I done off there. On the back page, I believe I got the payroll list. That second phase would be for a lot of electric. The same thing, eleven thousand. And Larry Suter was ninety-five hundred, the labor.
What's the difference between option two and option one, though? Ninety-six, twenty-five?
This is not putting a new hole and stuff in that friend of yours.
Okay. It's five hundred thousand.
Yeah, and here it is, so you can... So Mr. Don, such as you, you got what I do, I got everything completed now and finally got the holder from Flurrie and did come in and sit down and think when I called him.
So lucky to have seventeen is on top of that ninety-five hundred.
Yeah.
And ten thousand. For ninety-five, I got. How soon can we get that?
He said the spring. And you know, if there's a problem with mud or something in fields, he said you can make it from the road because they do. They do most of the field, so. I need to let him know so he can get it scheduled in as soon as he can.
And you're early spring to spring, right? Early spring to spring?
Yeah, they told me, said he'd get it.
Something we have to do, because...
It's pretty valuable, oh, it's pretty valuable in that one.
Go ahead and line it up with him. Who's good at that, Al, but I don't know.
Yeah, the other one that did all the overheads from outside, find you guys, those holes and all that.
I knew we accept no central line service bid for my student project.
And purchase all of...
We purchased it in January, so.
And you have marked purchase all the materials for it.
I'll second that. The move by Darryl, second by Rob, to approve the more central line service contract. With city purchasing all equipment. All favor, sign by same eye.
Aye.
All the same time, motion carries. Next up is police contract.
I knew we accept Lakeview's proposal. I said, yeah.
Do you want to cut it, negotiate any of the raises?
Oh, that part must deal with. That's how good luck's been, Charlie.
Give me a second there.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion on that? Not all favor, sign by same eye.
Aye.
All the same time, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it, fellas.
Thank you.
I think you put a gun in front of your desk.
It would be a good council if you did try to stick that.
You're in your first year at Ken on your...
Yeah, yes, I am. Yeah, I'm learning a lot. I'm learning a lot about electrical problems, you know. You guys know the same thing about us. Hard water's been tough on all of us this last couple of years. But like I said, our electrical deal is always a non-drun thing. And the good thing about that is, again, we want to thank you for going with us. And again, with you guys, any kind of electrical help or anything like that, we're available to help out whenever needed and stuff. Feel free. Bill's a good guy, he's willing to help out too, so again, thank you for, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the same way, you know, we come up and have a feeling like...
We all work together.
Yep.
Next thing we know, then, to them is cemetery. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Ask him when on the tour.
Add that and put the app before, but I don't think... Yeah, I need to get in this, it's coming up. Green on there.
It's getting watered right now.
It's green, but...
Do you want to run it for a minute?
Yeah.
Michelle called, reason twelve, got the amount for the insurance, I know he needs some insurance.
Okay, next thing on agenda then is the city clerk position.
I would think John wouldn't be around here with that.
Okay.
If somebody has something to add there.
Yeah, we gotta, what, we gotta add gunman and tell the PT.
Right.
Cut off at five o'clock, I think, is that's...
Really not much you can do with it till then.
You can't do anything with it then, and it's just... Probably get together or something after that date.
Soon after.
Soon after. What we do at five o'clock next Friday or, and wait them out and...
There are three new applicants and one previously is recently.
Are there three new ones?
So on the Friday, five, you got anything on that?
I can't say that. Too far away.
The lights in the room.
This Friday?
Well, yeah, I suppose the eighteen, eighteen. Any other things? When's that meeting, sort of late, March?
Eleven o'clock, Friday morning.
Yeah, that's...
That's not a gas one?
That's a gas.
Okay, that's in the morning, okay. Well, Friday night, okay. Just back to account for total nine minutes.
I'll do that all during Saturday. I don't mind.
I sound like you got a housing project.
I mean, that's why I need Friday, that's why I need Friday for the carpeting. I need to help you.
I have to work all day Saturday because Derek Pataoff and the speech kind of...
Oh, that's right, I even got to go.
Sounds like you already know.
Yeah.
Friday's just as good as any other day. We're not going to win, though.
I don't care what we do.
It shouldn't be too long, instead of wait out or whatever, I mean, we moved it on once.
Instead of interview, instead of time for interview.
We kind of waited them down once. So we can get five o'clock if...
Five oh one.
We'll show up.
You be around time Friday night?
Yeah.
John might, I might get a problem.
I might have to contact with him to see.
Yeah, that's basically it.
That's basically that'll work then after.
We'll show up here later. It might be done.
You know John.
We did that next time.
Should I talk real slow?
Okay, and then once the admin committee appointments, we did that on the minutes.
Well, did we still have to make a motion on it though, did we have to? Did we motion that stuff or did we?
I don't think they're disappointed.
There's a point.
Change the minutes, that's all we have to do, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
They're disappointed, they're...
They're appointed now. Under new business, then, Don Pataoff on the semi annual tip update.
That might be, I knew where things.
Just to give you an update, the last time we were here or I submitted was our July balance, which at that time was twenty-seven hundred dollars. And then we got our deposit from the city. And you'll see the bills that we've paid since then. The one thirty-one balance, that is what the balance was then, but cookies and cook sightings checks haven't cleared. So if you take that six off of there, it leaves us with about twelve thousand. So cookies, cooks and coin belt, those are our annual payments. Those amounts adjusted this year and those would be the same amounts I would get paid again in the June-July period. And docs was the remaining funds that they had on fixing their storefronts. That was finally completed. So those are the only projects that we've done in that six months time period. Then at the bottom, pending projects, where Big and Jamboree Foods is going to submit a request for a sign. And Cookies Food Products, there hasn't been any negotiations done on any rebate agreements or anything on their new project yet. And we've given urban renewal apps to Albright Oil and Westside Bank, and we haven't heard anything back from them. But that doesn't mean that those still couldn't be submitted. I think Albright's is still planning on submitting their expert the sidewalk. Then we have had some business requests, we just want to let you guys know about. We've had an ag person come to us on the service and sales business, two commercial service business, a residential service business and a light manufacturing that have approached us. Bottom line, no place to go with them at this point in given time. So if you flip over to the back, the first thing, these are kind of things that we've identified, our group has identified as our goal, whether they're short term or long term. The first thing we did is we did amend our bylaws and will continue with doing that, but we added three additional people to our group. So Darren Boger, Dave King, myself, John Morrow, Kent Dunhill, Kettis Thor, Craig Brotherton and Jeff Harry are the people that are the representatives on our committee. We did vote so that the person serving on the city council has no vote in our group. Okay, so in this case will be John. He's acting as the chairman of the group, but he has no voting powers. So those are what we've updated right now with the Secretary of State. The other thing we need to do is we talked about rezoning the properties, especially in TIP District One, pretty much because there's been a lack of increasing the property taxation there. What happens is if these people are in that TIP district, for instance, Cookies Food Products is an example of one. There's only ten years left with that twenty-year time period. So any new potential business that would go in that TIP District One, there's only ten years left for us to do anything with them. So if we remove some of the properties that right now aren't supplying any sort of property tax base to us, if a business is interrupted, we can put them back in the district and they would start at that twenty years again. Also, what we're trying to put together is we have an application for the beautification part and the urban renewal beautification process, which is the sidewalks, the storefronts, those sort of things. But we don't have a good project application for the bigger projects that are submitted to us. And lack of a lot of our current businesses in town not being able to fit into the governing rules that we have. So we're trying to expand some of those projects to possibly include a loan program. It's just one type of thing that we're doing. So we are meeting on a monthly basis and our group wants to accomplish a couple of things. And the first thing is, is we really need to educate the council and some of the other businesses in our community of what TIP is and how it functions and what it's going to do for our community. It's nothing that's a day-to-day thing. It is long-term planning. And what may seem to you guys at the moment of being, you know, we're losing money. You know, they're taking away tax base, that's not what's really happening. And we've talked about a couple of scenarios. For instance, the airport hangar. Our group did purchase that row wader building, I think it's been almost three years now. Two and a half, three years ago. Okay. We purchased it. Oh, nine we did?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We purchased it in talking with the council that a trade would be made that we would purchase that for the city and kind of take over the hangar so we could do some development for some business and industry. And that really hasn't happened yet. And we do know that that property for us to use TIP funds needs to be owned by the TIP group. And if we wanted to do any bonding through the TIP, it has to be in TIP's name. So for instance, say somebody wants to develop out there and we get everything up to specs, we know it's in a flood plain, number one. So for a bank to financially stand behind anybody building down there could not happen. And they would not get any financial backing because it is in a flood plain. So our intentions are to, number one, find out if this is a feasible project to do. And then all the infrastructure is already there, you guys have already invested in that. Everything's there, gas, electric, all that. So we spend forty thousand dollars getting in dirt to bring it up to where it needs to be and we sell a portion of that and somebody builds a two-hundred-thousand-dollar building there. And we're going to get six thousand dollars a year, the city is on taxes for twenty years. You know, we didn't take that money away, but we're reinvesting and increasing the tax base. So it brings jobs to our community. People are going to spend all their money there and it is increasing their tax base and their property values. So we just want you guys to be aware, it's not us trying to take the money. However, there is going to be circumstances. We are working right now on a possible exchange of some land. Is there somebody on all four sides of us right now that owns property? This community cannot expand. No one wants to sell any of that property to us. But we may be able to persuade one of those people to exchange that property for a different property somewhere. Who's going to pay for that exchange to happen? You know, the city? Or that's what the TIP funds are there for.
I'd like to, if I could, it says, you say the TIP funds are for everything I said. This ordinance that we passed here, ordinance number two thousand and four dash one, provided that general property taxes levied and collected each year on certain property located within the two thousand and four addition to the Wall Lake Urban Renewal Area, Commercial, Industrial of City of Wall Lake, County of SAC, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Wall Lake, County of SAC, Wall Lake, New Auburn, Community School District and other taxing districts to be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans. Money is advanced into the indebtedness included bonds issued or to be issued incurred in said city in connection with the two thousand and four addition. Now, this TIP was set up for any for paying the bonds, the interest, principal and interest on loans. I got this from county auditor's office and county auditor's certificate. This was redone in two thousand and nine by the city council there. And the original one said the same thing as far as the ordinance amended and all that. Original tax increment debt certificate was an amount of debt. It said for Cook Siding, two thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars. For Wall Lake School, for Cookies. For Cookies Food Products is eighty-six hundred and fifty-one dollars. And for the Wall Lake Economic Development Committee, twenty-five thousand.
I don't know about the twenty-five thousand, I don't know about those, but the other ones are to pay the indebtedness, the taxes back as a form of reimbursement to Cookies and Cookies.
And who was this out of by?
The council years ago are the ones that approved the TIP.
That's what I'm just showing right there, the what was, those recorded.
This is the two thousand and four history. I assume because it says two thousand and four addition to the Wall Lake Urban Renewal Area, Commercial, Industrial.
That's the update, that was the one we read up in two thousand and nine. We amended it in two thousand and nine.
Well, the two thousand and four one is the district going up south.
And there's another one. And there's another one. It was filed with the county auditor's.
What I'm informing you, Ray, is what the State of Iowa rules that I have learned.
Okay, you may have learned some things, but there's something here you cannot take out of one district and pay in another district. That come out of Ayers and Cooley and also, what's the other one?
Dorsey and Whitney.
Yeah, Dorsey and Whitney. It says if the city or county has more than one tax increment area, may funds from any area be spent in any other area. Funds must be spent within the boundaries of the tax increment area from which they are derived. And if there's no more than one tax increment area, the funds from one area may not be spent within another area. That's about the questions and answers on tax increments. Comes from Dorsey and Whitney.
Were you asking a question here?
No, it can't be taking funds from one district to another district or whatever, TIP district.
You guys can discuss that later. That's not why I'm here. I was making sure what we use, so.
I'm just saying that we should be using some of this money on paying down debt. We have got debt out there right now. We've got principal and interest of 110 and interest of 33, so $143,000 we've got coming due this year.
Well, we will barely have enough. We would not be able to fund anything else the rest of the year except the next round of payments. So our group's done then for the year.
Still, the city council that controls what happens with that money. They're responsible.
What was that number you just showed us about bond and interest?
Right there. The top ones are, the first two up there are from the city center, CD there to take care of that, the bottom three, which is our natural gas, gas or water or electrical line going outside, and then the wells, sewer, well out there.
Well, you know, I just want to educate the council on this, that there's a new electric wind that says "halts" for the payment $65,000. That's our bond and interest payments for $65,000 for this year. I didn't actually analyze this because it was a little bit difficult. And secondly, I didn't really have the time to do it.
Can I politely be dismissed?
Hmm?
Can I be done? Do you have any more questions for me?
All right. How are you doing? How are you doing?
I'm done with what I have to say because I'm not going to get in the middle of anybody's political matter here. That's not my job.
No, I'm not. I'm just. I'm disputing the fact that this bond and interest is true. The fact is.
This is what county auditor's.
I'm disputing the fact that this bond and interest can be paid by TIP, which is incorrect. It cannot be paid by TIP because the $695,000, $326,851.25 was paid on the wind generator bond, which has nothing to do with TIP. So to tell me that you can pin the $65,000 out of TIP would be incorrect.
There is some of that money that was spent putting that line up.
Well, good. Now you clarified it, so I agree with that. Some of the money is.
Yes.
Can you tell me from that sheet that Marlene gave me how much?
Marlene gave me which one?
She gave me that, told me that's what the cost of that electric thing was going out south. And I wanted to know how much of that expenditure we could count as TIP and all drawn together. I mean, I get to come up with a general idea in my head, but obviously $695,000 bonds is not subject to even TIP money.
Okay, you get those numbers relatively easy, John, but how much money do we have to pay off on the wind generator when we bond it?
It's right there. $326,851.25 off of the $695,000. And then all the cost of the substation is not in the TIP district. All the cost from the substation to First Street, or Second Street, the country store is not within the TIP district. So I'm just saying, you know, I'm not sure just what it is.
And a natural gas line, I suppose you're going to tell me that's not out there for anything either, is that?
I don't, you know, I don't, I'd have to read through this thing because this was done in 2004.
This was, it was done in 2004 and it was redone in 2009. It was amended in 2009 with that same order.
Okay. Well, let me just tell you what come out of the meeting today. And this is what come out of the meeting today. If we had a person to come into town to do some commercial expansion in this community, do we have an opportunity for them to locate here? The answer is no. We don't have any opportunities for anybody to locate in Wall Lake. That was our function to do that. Now, our function is not, you know, if you want to spend this money to the city council on bond and interest that you've already incurred, you know, we need to know that. But if we're going to do some kind of tax-free exchange, we need to be able to take their money, plunk down money, and do the exchange. We also have to know that this funding is going to not be here next month, but for the next 10 or 20 years because you would have to bond that kind of thing. Now, if you don't want your town to grow, I'm fine with that. I don't care anymore. You know, I'm here to try to set up the mechanism to make it available for somebody to have commercial property in this town. If you're not interested in that, just say, like he said, let's pay bond and interest and we're not interested in that.
It can be done, John. If somebody wants to come in here, you can set up a TIP program and take care of it.
We already have a TIP program.
I mean, it can be done. Lady just did it with that new restaurant and everything else over there and motel.
Yeah.
And that was all TIP. So it can be done if somebody wants to come in. I'm not saying that I want all the money to be paid for the water pump. I'm saying that we should be a portion of that to pay for it. I'm all for economic development at the same time. But I'm thinking that, you know, we've got a hell of a lot of bills here that we should be paying down too somewhat.
To me, the whole situation is, is this economic development is always so shrouded in darkness that you don't know the amount of money that we're talking about. We never know what we're talking about. You know, that's what, that's what we have to give cold feet is because I have no idea. If you're talking about a property exchange, okay, what is it? You know, well, you can't tell us. And how much money is that going to cost? We can't tell you.
Well, we don't know those. I mean, we're just coming up with scenarios right now.
If anyone wants to commit to a 10- to 20-year deal on it, just in case. See, you know, those are the kind of things that, there's just a big question mark there that is unanswered right now. And for us to jump in and say, we are behind you 100%. We don't even know what we're committing to.
That's why you guys need to get educated. We all need to hear the same thing from the same people, you know, and the people that need to do that, you know, we originally heard it from Dorsey and Whitney. You know, now, of course, we'll use the other, we'll use the other ones, but John's right, though. You can't, you have, you know, when you make these agreements with the Cookies and the Cooks and the Cornbells and all these, you have to know those funds are there. You know, if they're not there, you know, you're in trouble. But yeah, TIP isn't something today and change your mind tomorrow. Everybody has to be on the same page and know that this is for development in the future. We're not going to see the ramifications today.
What Ray's saying here, Don, is that we didn't, excuse me, Ray, we did make a commitment in 2004 to pay some bond and interest according to our statement here, and we're not doing that. So what Ray's saying is it was there that day and it's not there now. You see, you know, here today, here tomorrow.
Sure. And I was totally, I was aware of that. I was involved.
You know, that's why Ray's educating the TIP committee on what they actually committed to at the beginning here, too.
But our committee has decided that, I mean, if you guys don't want to do this, then we just have to stop it right now.
Well, you're just putting that big bear on us right now, except we don't know what we're doing. And you don't either, evidently, you know, so what do we do? Okay, we're fine with it, but we don't know what's going on. You know, I mean, other than we're talking about some esoteric things here that nobody knows.
But you do know what's going on. You know that the TIP was formed in 2000. The first district was formed in 1999 with the valuation. That there was a committee formed to take care of that TIP money. In 2004, they, and I'm not sure if they added on to the first district or it was a second district. My understanding from Allers and Cooney is that statement wasn't correct, but I'm not a lawyer. I'm not a discuss lawyer to question that. But in 2004, they added on the second district and most of the emphasis with that or impetus was due to WIE coming in for it. All right, the second district after it was formed, WIE's valuation for buildings for property tax purposes was, I don't know what the number was, 45 million or something. And our 5% that was coming into TIP was $230,000. And if you look back at the TIP that we received in the next four or five years, it was $666, $666. Bob Johnson and I got in one hell of an argument over that $666 because their fees were $3,500. And so Bob Johnson got kicked the hell out of here. Anyway, so we went to Allers and Cooney and said, we need to sit down and figure out what went wrong. Today, we're getting like $25,000 off the TIP district number two. All right, so now we got all this money coming in here and the city council wants to take the TIP back. And I don't care if you take the TIP back. It's a lot more money sitting around before.
I'm not saying that it was a portion of the bond.
A portion of the TIP, according to our agreement. Ian, someone's to take it home.
I have a problem with that. I'm just having a.
Okay, then put it into your plans, please. Okay, that's what we're asking the TIP committee. Put some of it into your plans.
If we're going to do it, we have to give a dollar amount.
Right. I mean, that probably is true because right now, all it says in the agreement between the city and the TIP group is up to 100%. So it could be zero. I mean, we don't really know.
I don't know if you were on the council. You might have been off at the council, but you know, when they put in the WIE thing, you were in there.
And most of that went back to.
That was the tax.
That was the tax.
Yeah.
But.
The TIP went back to where we got.
85%.
Well, the council is not educated on the TIP. I know they're not.
Well, I think it's more like this. If you go out and you do the groundwork, there's a guy by the name of David Brown, and this is, this is a 1033 exchange program, 1031, I'd say, 1031 exchange program, probably the only place in Iowa you can go, isn't the only place, but they're probably the best place in Iowa. And so if you want to go do a deal with these people, they say, just send us some money and we'll do the exchange. So if we work out the deal and we do the exchange, you know, you're talking to $250,000. Well, TIP can do that, but we can't do that without commitments from the city council. And Ray's over here saying, I give the feedback, it's a commitment. And if you don't, and you guys agree not to, fine, don't.
No, I'm for the TIP, but I want to see some of this money going back to pay some of our, either our interest off or our loans or whatever. Now, we're sitting here, we've got to have, what, $150,000 or whatever for a well and they're telling us, are we going to operate electricity? If we want to bring new business in, we couldn't do it anyway. We couldn't handle electricity, according to the report we got. I don't know how accurate that report was, but according to the report.
I can argue that point either because I think we need to do something.
Our city's agent is just going to cost us more money than what it's just to prove back, so. And TIP is a wonderful thing. It helps pay those things. But also, I want to see your businesses come to town, too. So. Yeah, keep that open, too.
Biggest thing is having a place for them to go. Right now, we're really struggling with that. We have to.
And that's what, that is our whole point. I mean, when people are coming to our group saying, help assist us in bringing our business to your community, we can't. There's just nothing there.
And if we were to do this land exchange, then you're telling me that that would eat up all the TIP funds?
No.
Okay, well, that's the impression I get.
You have, I mean.
I mean, that's the impression I get from you guys.
You have to know that we're going to have a certain dollar amount. Like, right now, I mean, we know every year that we're going to make $18,000 at least worth of payment to the businesses we already have contracts with. Okay, so we know we have to have that much money. That's not doing any urban revitalization whatsoever and that's not paying another bill. So then, if we did an exchange, we could actually bond it through the TIP. But, and then if we knew how much money was coming back in from the TIP funds to our group, we could pay that bond off with those funds. I mean, that's where we're saying, long-term, we wouldn't have to come up with, you know, enough to buy 25 acres a day and write a check, but there's other ways we can get a hold of the money for the city.
And see, we still, you know, still it's gray on that. We're going to get the money from a TIP program and then we're going to filter it to you. How much?
Well, we don't know that because we can't even make an agreement with anybody yet.
When do we, you know, so you need to have our commitment before the agreement?
Not necessarily, but I mean, we don't want to go out and be negotiating things with people and, you know, have to go back to them and tell them, you know, we can't because we can't fund it.
I know, but again, you're saying you want us to, we're behind this 100% no matter what it costs. See, that's, I mean, that's what.
No, I don't, I don't believe in that.
That's why I feel right now, though, Don.
No, I don't. Because if there's things that need to be paid, we, I mean, our group does understand that. But we have to know how far we can go, you know, to attract businesses to this community. How interested is the council in doing that? And I don't think you, I mean, I think it's impossible for you guys to put a dollar figure to that. I mean, it is just literally impossible.
What do we do then?
I mean, that's you guys' call. Like John said, I mean, we're just, we're here to help attract business long-term. And if it isn't through the TIP program, then, you know, the city will have to find other ways to attract business. That's just the bottom line. I mean, it's, you can't just put a dollar amount to it, say it's going to be 50% or it's going to be $10,000 or, I just don't think you can because you never know what's going to come up. You know, especially with the businesses that are in this town, you know, right now functioning.
See, without us being aware of who you're talking to or what, we don't have any idea what that figure is either.
Well, some of these people don't want their names disclosed until, you know, that's.
I understand that. That's why we still need some kind of figures for you. That's what I don't.
I don't know how we can give you a figure because every, I mean, there's so many things. How can we tell? How can we tell you exactly what a project's gonna cost, because you don't know, I always know when you're going into it.
Let's, let's just talk about a project that we already have done. And that's the electric project down to Hallicks and then on out to CPS. Um, you know, if you're looking at it from purely the TIP point of view, um, you would take the cost from First Street to Hallicks, less than $42,000 that they put in the project, and you could tip that. And probably all the money that went on the rest of the way out to CPS. And I know that they didn't, they didn't, um, request any TIP on the new building they put up, so there's some TIP money that's coming from that. So you could say, okay, we bonded part of that money, we figured out what the bond is. But you have it all coming in these numbers, I don't know, you have to do a little bit of guessing, I guess, to figure out what went away.
Figure out what, you know, what's on the cost on it.
Yeah, pro-rate it back or something, so you could do it. And then say, okay, out of that $695, we're gonna pay the money, seven, eight, whatever it ends up being. And then put that on the schedule, and you, it could actually take those funds...
What is it, $150,000 or whatever, you know, that'll give up, half of it, third of it, or whatever, that's us...
Right, I, yeah, I know what you're saying, I'm just saying, well, you know, who's gonna, who's gonna do that? You know, the City Council did do that, or your, or the TIP Committee did do that, or who, I don't know. I guess my incentive was that the, when we started it, the group that got it going was kind of the group that was doing it. And since then, the City Council's changed, so it's changed.
But we've changed in a, in a way that is hindering you from doing things?
No, I, I guess I get the feeling that it's, it's, it's now the TIP funds are no longer managed by this group, they're managed by the City Council. And, you know, I have a problem with that either, well, I mean, but, you know, I disagree in a sense that you can just say, these bonds and interest are TIP funds, they're gonna be paid by TIP. It'd have to be a agreement.
I don't think you say that they all are, I think you say, I think it takes a portion.
There's a portion, a portion of who should be for, for the, and this is, and this is, this is for development, too, the same way. We all need to develop out there at, at, uh, at the IED and Hallicks and...
I think I even heard that out of your mouth one time, that we may be able to tip some of this, we may be able to tip some of this from, from first to, to, versus first to second, you know, out of this district. And then from first on on that way, we could tip some of that. And I mean, there's two separate deals, and then that's, we just haven't spoken about it again. And it's...
It sounds to me like bottom line, you don't have good records or good delineation of your figures on one end for anybody to try to figure out all these numbers.
Well, I mean, it costs, it costs us so much money afoot to put it in. We can figure out how many feet are there.
Right, but I, I'm not gonna do that, I don't know that.
I, I'm not asking you to. But, you know, you came to us, and, and Ray brought up another part of it, is that we should pay some bond and interest out of this TIP fund, too.
I, I don't disagree with that, that's you guys' right. I just think we all need to get informed, because we're not. You know, we're not all understanding the uses and how it can be done and, and how it can affect...
So where should we go to get that, Don?
Um, we came up with a few names actually today that we're gonna research and see if we can get people to come here and actually do presentations for the council and our group.
Okay. And I think originally, we weren't actually spending the money very well, and that's why we created the group.
That's why we created, that's, that was my impression of what we did.
The group was pretty much created from the beginning, it hadn't been over, you know, it wasn't structured as a separate corporation or a dummy corporation, quote-unquote.
The base design, so they could do things outside of the City Council.
Well, I understand that.
They have public knowledge.
See, it's my impression that that was set up originally so, so that, that the TIP funds were not spent, they had to be sent back. So we set this, set this corporation up so that they, the funds that were not spent could go into that corporation to make sure we didn't lose it.
Right, we set the same plan up that Greitinger...
That's my understanding.
That Greitinger Iowa set up, we followed their same lead, and that was done by Dorsey and them.
Okay.
Yeah, if the city doesn't use up their funds by the end of the fiscal year, you have to give it back to the school and the county and all, I mean, not as...
I understand, and so every year, we transfer it to the TIP.
Because then you've got a little bit more freedom, it's out of the, the government unit, which is, and, you know, that's just a state rule.
And so far to date, we've spent it all.
No, we haven't spent it all.
We have, we'll have 12...
She says you have $12,000.
In our checking, without...
But our financial, our, um, I don't have any really up-to-date financials.
There's 33 or something sitting in the city's TIP account.
First, we got $33,000 in the city budget, or in city funds that we've collected that aren't part of those numbers.
That will be transferred to here?
Well, essentially, that's what the plan, but...
I mean, we're not pining, you know, we just wanna know what's going on. That's basically all I wanna know.
We, we, we don't know.
And Ray brought up a point that, you know, some of it possibly could be spent, spent for bond and interest, but that's not something that...
But definitely, you guys have to make a decision by the end of June with that money, because then you're gonna get another payment in in May.
But that's what he said, originally, that's what it was set up for, was amended at, at 2009, I mean, the state, I was working on 2009.
And Ray, and I can work on what it costs us to run that out there, and...
Absolutely.
Yeah, you can pretty much just pull these in, and then I think she separated it up. I think the expansion out on the south was $150,000.
Well, it was so much for a foot of wire, I think, $25,000, $300,000, something like that.
A whole well project, everything involved in the well, you could put, and on the sewer, you could put, so...
All we're saying, I think, Rod, is if we devote ourselves to a major project...
Are you telling me that TIP money can, can be spent on a well? I'd say that. I just said a well is part of that project.
We borrowed money or whatever.
This project, oh, you're talking about the WIE. This was the electric.
The well is a WIE well.
Yeah, I know, but this is not the well, this is a land. I'm just, I'm just...
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, too, Don, you just, you know, you wanted to know how much you got, too.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, until we, our group doesn't wanna, I mean, move forward and try to pursue avenues with other people until we, you know, but we're just gonna have to come back and get a commitment from you then at that time, but, I mean, for right now, we just, you know, we don't have any funds to go out and make those agreements with anybody, you know? And that's just the way it would function, be the same if you guys had the money and had to spend it, you know? You'd have to spend it or give it back. Whereas with us, we have a little bit more flexibility to, you know, do some of the bigger projects that you guys couldn't afford just to write a check for, is what we're saying.
So, you know, basically, we're two entities that are just moving...
Doing the same thing, so, after you go.
And, uh, but, uh, you know, I thought that's why we created this corporation, so they could come back and report to us every six months.
Well, I didn't, no, I, I've been here every six months. This month, I'm probably monthly, but yeah, otherwise, since I, I mean, since we did that agreement...
I think the agreement said May and November.
Um...
I'm pretty sure it was. You got, and then we transferred funds in June and December.
I, I thought it was July and January, so that's my fault.
Well, you transferred funds in June, so we need to report before.
Wow.
Okay, well, we can do it in May and November, that's fine. Because I've just been doing it July and January. If I look, I mean, go back and give you the figures that I've reported to you, so. But we can do that, I don't care. But I mean, right now, I, I mean, I wouldn't have anything to report that's any different in May, right now, unless you guys actually give us money, because we've already made our payments, and they'll get made probably in June, the next round.
So what you need to have, city, by May, is a commitment that says we would like you guys to pursue something to the tune of this much money per year.
Well, if we have, especially if we have a project that we can tell you that specifically somebody's interested in.
We'll tell them how much we want them to pay on our bonds every year.
Well, we'll tell them how much we are going to pay on our bonds first, and then how much is available for the TIP after that, is the way.
Yeah, because I mean, we really do need to know, if, we're planning a long-term thing, we can't all of a sudden have, us be having to repay back a loan, or we did a loan with somebody, or we did an agreement, or we bonded something, and then we have no way to pay it back, so, you know, longevity-wise, yeah, we would have to know. But we can almost, you know, do some of those things on a, you know, an annual basis, because we know where we're gonna go this year, who we're gonna promise things to a lot of times, so. But what we're just getting at right now is there's nothing to promise anyone, because we have nowhere to go. We're locked in our little four walls, and we need to get out of that space, and, um, there's plenty of people that have contacted us and wanna build on property, and there just is nothing, unless we do a trade of land somehow and we need cash, and/or we get that airport up to where it needs to be. So, I mean, those are...
So what should we do? I mean, I don't think we can do both, you know?
Well...
Airport's probably your, as far as cost-wise, is gonna be your most...
But it's in a floodplain.
But we're working on getting people out there to see if, if we can get that out of the floodplain.
Right now, we are doing both, hopefully we can...
We're researching both. But yeah, to me, the airport is a no-brainer. I, I mean, I think it's a great spot. Infrastructure's there, it's great, but if it's not feasible to actually, I mean, we're gonna literally have to buy dirt.
I understand that.
You know, so that, that's the only thing there, so, I mean, the dirt took tack and set on me, and we're still looking at a couple of years down the road before that's probably up and ready.
Oh, at one time, we had a verbal agreement that we were gonna have it done already, but that fell by the wayside, so...
Well, we can't do anything, because that property's in the city domain. So I mean, we wouldn't be able to do any TIP bonding or do anything.
The city had the verbal agreement.
Well, no, but it's, it's not there anymore evidently, so we're gonna have to do something and figure it... And that would, you know, that would require someone's defense, too. You guys would be in agreement if we went ahead and used TIP funds to do that kinda stuff.
That's our, I mean, that's what we wanna do, yeah. That's what they're there for, so...
This is the first time we've spoken this way.
Just do any money you want.
Well, I don't, this is the first time, this is as far along as we've gotten in this thing, it looks like we're about to go on.
I didn't do what you...
I mean, no, but this, you know, I mean...
You embarrassed me.
This is the, you know, this is where we've gotten right now. I'm, I'm happy that we had this conversation, we just have more of them.
We're all on the same page, I mean, I think, the bottom line is just, we gotta develop this town and, and make more opportunities, and, you know, we talked today, there's one site in the whole county of SAC that any industry or commercial business could come to. There's not one other town, and it's up at SAC, you know? Wouldn't it be great if we had three lots, you know, and we had, you know, different opportunities for people? Evaco got there because they were a ready site, and they found them on the web. You know, how easy, zero marketing. You know, that's where you need to use, you know, what we got to bring people to our community. And that's what those funds are for, is to create more jobs and create a bigger tax base that comes back, so you guys can pay more money down. Revenue.
Okay, we'll keep them all in TIP. But I, no, if you had somebody come and talk to you, I could entertain that.
Well, I, I just think it's good, I mean, there's a lot of people that don't understand it until, I mean, we all can learn something from it and get a, get a perspective, so I just think it's good, and, like I said, we came up with some names, and we'll get back to you. You know, if we can arrange something for everybody.
SAC, I don't know, right now, the one, two using TIP is WALE, I can't even, Forty Bo did use a TIP for companies out there or whatever.
SAC does a loan program, that's about all they offer up there.
Oh, you know, I, we gotta give John credit for creating this, you know, it's kinda, it's kinda the best piece of work.
Everything else, do a lot of work on Bantus.
Okay, move along, Doc's liquor license.
I make a motion, we approve Doc's liquor license.
I'll second that.
Move by, Francis, second right there. Who, Doc's liquor license, long table, second by, state an aye?
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries.
Just up there, you look at John.
Anybody, you know, audience, I do have a couple other things.
On the bills, need to add, mean, electric?
Yeah, I do, um, I do serve on the SAC economic development and the foundation fund, and we did, um, hold our first round of grants, um, we did them last Tuesday night. We have more money than the, um, projects that were submitted, so we're gonna be doing a second round of grants. Um, I believe they're due at the end of May or sometime in May, I believe. If you can come up with something as a city, again, I think we need to just keep plunking away and keep applying for those funds.
And Shirley said there was $36,000, I think.
Left, that we'll have to grant back, yes. So...
Many cities in there.
Yeah, that's the first time, usually we, you know, have to deny them, or we don't have enough funds to fund all the projects, and, so... If you guys have anything that...
We've got money, imagine this one.
Um, infrastructure.
I mean, we had something here, contract cost for SAC County landfill, I think everybody got a handout on that. And then there's a meeting at King's Point Resort on natural gas pipeline, uh, that is going under the mark for myself to go to, maybe both of us go.
Minimizing...
This is natural gas.
Oh, they gotta use natural gas, too.
Well, yeah, it could be, I don't know, open margins.
That's what yours, I don't know. Yeah, good then.
And also, in there is about, um, NMPP meeting, and reading out a, uh, a book. Congrats to city, you did handouts, too. We have a media invitation for Northwest Iowa League of Cities, uh, members, uh, that is Thursday.
This Thursday?
This Thursday, at SAC, at Cavilman's. Uh, anybody interesting going to that, or...
I can't make it.
Well?
I don't have your attention, the Clark County Number One, so, that night.
That's gotta work.
Was that?
Yeah.
You know it.
Turn that camera off of there. Will Steve be aligned by that?
I don't know.
Yeah, just put two down for us, and if Steve's well and wants to go, I'll, I'll let him go on that.
Some bowling contract, $10,000 minimum, liability insurance. So, how much, $1,000?
I'm moving adjourned.
Move the second adjourned, long table, second by, state an aye?
Aye.
Close same sign? Oh?
Yeah. No, I just, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the city.
Close and carry.
So you guys, you guys can announce, I got your hat. Can you do Monday at five? Ready? Can you do that Monday at five with the city? Ray, can you do that Monday at five with the city council?
Maybe this, maybe twenty-eight, I guess.
See, maybe, then maybe we can get together, interview the points.
Discuss. I don't know if I can sub in, mid-five, but just run the tee up. Replace that, put new braces on it. They might as well, in case it's good enough, you know, condition that case is, you should have made them all up. Yeah, and put a new flag. And put a brace in there, and still hold it up, sort of, hold that whole everything up.